At 2:00, I'm here in Guam. This call to order for the fourth special session. So if I may ask Senator Mike Sinikles if you can lead us in the this morning. Mike Sinikles.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today as your humble servants, placed into these positions by you for one purpose only, and that is to serve your people. Send your spirit down upon us with all of your divine grace and divinity, that we may, in full faith and courage, always remember that we serve only one master, and that master are your sons and daughters, your children, our people. Help us to remember, oh Lord, that in serving our masters, it requires that we speak truth to power. It requires that we put aside all of our own fears and trepidations. We put aside all of our own ambitions. We put aside anything and everything that is selfish, and that we seek only to serve the people that you have put under our care. Lord, this job is not easy. And many times, we come to you in our own special way to ask for your grace. But as individuals, we are all weak; as one body, we are strong. And it is your wisdom that has inspired the hearts and the minds of the people to create this body that stands before them today in service. Erase all things that tie us elsewhere. Tie us only to you; tie us only to your people. And let us serve them with a clean heart, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'd like to ask Senator Mike Ullman if he can lead us in the recitation of the hymn.
Gine namastakulum, gine nasoku, namastakulum, purasono, dani masfigo, naniniya senyaho, o farsen maizazu, parabayu protehi, dani hudefendi, ihinangi, koutura, ylinga, sanitano tomorrow, mirinshoku derecho, gine nazu osatou, sishia klima, fino olpia, dani benedahu, ipenderan guan.
And if Senator McCready can lead us in the Guam hymn, and Senator Uggan if he can lead us in the national anthem.
(Chanting) O, vitam oru, furita loka, kantana tengani, toru vittuta. Parari orma, parari gorria, pabiva iisla senpara. Parari orma, parari gorria, pabiva iisla senpara. Toru vitem, furita, paradiita, dandimi, rannima, veni shon. O, trai peliku, napansafuha, tus protehi islanwa. O, trai peliku, napansafuha, tus protehi islanwa. Oh, say, can you see, by the dark early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last meeting? Whose broad stripes and bright stars drew the bear of the swine? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. The clerk empties the table.
Senator Tom Ada, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Uggan, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Duennius, Senator Lim Tiako, Senator McCready, Senator Morrison, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Pangolinan, Senator Rispichu, Senator Rodriguez, Senator Siniklas, Speaker Wampat, Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Senator Tom Ada be excused from today's session. He's still out silent.
Motion without any objection, so ordered.
And I move that we approve the legislative journal dated August 23, 2013, the third special session, subject to correction.
Motion without any objection, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we waive the communications and petitions, given that this is a call to special session, and we should only address the nature of the call, to waive item eight.
Okay, motion without any objection, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, there is a message from Imagallah in Guam regarding this call to special session, and I move that that be penned in a session journal.
Motion without any objection, so ordered.
And then, Madam Speaker, I move that we waive maybe items 10, 11, and 12, given that we are in a call to special session. That's the reports of standing committees, reports of select committees, and introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions.
Motion without any objection, so ordered.
And, Madam Speaker, as well as, I don't have any motions for this special session, so item 13, that we waive motions, and we waive item 14, its legislative concurrence, as well as item 15, consent calendar. Again, we are in a call to special session, and so the only thing we should be addressing is the subject of the call.
Okay, motion without any objections.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. Madam Speaker, at this time, we are in the second reading file, and I'll read it. It's bill number 1-4S, introduced by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform by the request of Imagallah in Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. And this is an act making appropriations for the operations of the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2014, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions.
Okay, motion without any objections, so ordered. So, we are on the second reading file. Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, as required by law, by statute, and standing rules, by standing rules, that the bill before us, 1-4-S, is an appropriations measure, and such we should resolve into the committee of the whole, so I move we resolve into the committee of the whole.
Motion without any objections, so ordered. Okay, we'll take a brief recess.
Is now in session. Once again, we find ourselves, my good colleagues, here in this hall, and before us lies another proposal for the funding of the fiscal year 2012 operations of the government of Guam for fiscal year 2014. We pretty much have the same rules of the body, and at this time, I would like to go ahead and recognize Senator Michael Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm assuming we're on item one of the substitute.
Yes, we're on item one, substitute, or one on bill 4-S. We're on the short title, amendments or deletions, none. We're now on the item one of chapter one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, at this time, make a motion on item 1A, line 11, on the provision for tax refund payments, to amend that number from $113 million up to $120 million.
On a motion to amend 113 to 120? All right. Call for the vote. You that you want to speak?
No discussion, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have a discussion on it, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, for far too long, our government has been having to address crisis after crisis as it pops up, all too conveniently sometimes, in order for certain outcomes to work in favor of those who are seeking to have certain outcomes. The last thing we need to do is to create a crisis in tax refunds. We are currently under a court order right now. It may look like the governor is paying out tax refunds from the goodness of his heart, but the reality is, we are under a court order to be paying out these tax refunds. No matter who the governor is, tax refunds will be paid out over a set schedule. It behooves this body to make sure that we are not going to be manufacturing a future crisis by under provisioning for tax refunds going into fiscal year 2014. Because it's a court order, Mr. Chairman, I am worried that if we do not provision enough for tax refunds, if we do not provision the $120 million that I am proposing, we may be forced through court order to take drastic measures that nobody in this body would want to consider. If we are under court order to pay refunds, and we did not adequately provision for that, what is going to be the next crisis, Mr. Chairman? Are we going to have another special session to sell the port? Are we going to have another special session to sell GPA? Are we going to have another special session to sell waterworks? Is this going to be leading us down a path to divest the people's assets? For the sake of special interests? We need to make sure that we are not going to be setting up the next crisis. And so first and foremost, we need to live up to our commitments to the people and make sure that we are adequately provisioning to pay tax refunds on time as ordered by the courts for fiscal year 2014. And so, Mr. Chairman, that is the reason why I proffered the amendment to raise the provision for tax refund amounts from $113 million to $120 million.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I certainly understand the concerns of the retiring speaker, I think it doesn't, we don't have to go that far back to realize that there was a crisis in terms of not paying tax refunds to our people. And that's why we went to the bond market, to make sure that we didn't face the very lawsuit and discussions that have been proffered by the retiring speaker in terms of what could have gotten us into that situation to begin with. Mr. Chairman, the point that the gentleman makes is exactly right. We are court ordered to pay those tax refunds. Time and time again, the executive branch has represented, even to include this fiscal year, that they are tracking to the amount of, more than likely, not paying out, or as the status, the proper status of refunds, at between $107 to $110 million. We are here now appropriating, if this budget measure goes through and this amendment fails, $5 to $7 million above what the current year is tracking after having taken care of all the past due through the bond financing and getting to where we are right now. Now, I will be the first to admit, because I fought the hardest on this floor, I believe, for that bond measure, which was difficult. We even had to go through two series, series A and series B, which cost us $5 to $7 million more in terms of going out to the market. And maybe could be our money that we're appropriating right now. But, Mr. Speaker, I will say, and the reason, maybe one more day, last Friday, we could have gone through this and disposed of this and wouldn't have had to be here, but that crisis at the hospital was real. And there really is no other measure, at least on our cursory review, my cursory review, in this budget, unless, as we go on, there will be other monies that are deappropriated for the purposes of being able to assist our hospital than this $7 million right now that currently exists. I'll be willing to work with my colleagues to go down the line and find it. But at this point, I believe this has been the money identified. If this bill passes, to be able to continue the appropriations for the hospital, to assist them until they can get back on financial stable footing. And in closing, Mr. Chair, I hope this amendment will fail, because I think it's about time we give the executive branch the opportunity to execute and to live with that court order and to live with this budget that they've sent to us, because they're the ones who are going to have to, at the end of the day, account for this measure that they've sent, and I believe that this $7 million is contained in here. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak on this amendment.
Thank you very much. Senator Cruz, could you have your hand up, Mr. Vice Speaker?
I'll wait until we get to the GMH section. Because I probably shouldn't be discussing my concerns about GMH at this point.
Yes. Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to stand in support of the proposed amendment to adjust the tax refunds figures back to, revert it back to $120 million. And there's no need for me to repeat some of the comments of the primary sponsor of that amendment. But I want to say, Mr. Speaker, that I know that the chief executive, in his communication with the speaker in regards to this particular proposal, had identified that as a funding source. But I believe that consistently, this body has passed and forwarded legislation dealing with the budget for fiscal year 14 at that level of $120. And the message is that not only do we understand that there is a court order that would require that, in fact, all tax refunds be remitted to taxpayers within six months of the date of their filing, but that this body also recognizes that although $120 is not the ideal figure that really should be incorporated into this tax refund provision, only because some of the other information that was shared with us by revenue tax officials. But $120 certainly moves in that direction. And I stand in support of increasing that and assuring our people that, yes, understandably, that $113 would have addressed some of our taxpayers or majority of our taxpayers, but $120 is an additional commitment, ensuring that, in fact, our people who have paid their taxes will receive their tax refunds accordingly in conjunction with the court order. I want to also say this, Mr. Speaker, that as we go through this entire budget process and looking at some of the concerns that were highlighted by the chief executive, and also identifying some of the compromises that were reached, I think that if you just enumerate the compromises, the previous measure that he had on his desk, that he vetoed, I believe was a tremendous compromise in terms of reaching the middle ground with regards to where this upcoming fiscal year's budget concerns really should lie. And he highlighted it very, very well in his letter. There's no need for me to repeat it. But he enumerated six items where, in fact, this body, after subsequent consideration of some of the concerns and that he had forwarded to yourself, as well as the speaker, on the budget that were incorporated into the budget that was passed and that he just recently vetoed. I want to just also say this, Mr. Speaker, that as we look at funding GMH, we understand that there are going to be additional requirements into fiscal year 14. And I keep hearing that in the last couple of days, and I know that this, I'm trying to tie this in, Mr. Speaker, with the tax refund component, because it's all about the revenues and it's all about the allocation of resources. But when we look at the tax refunds that is due to our people, and we look at the funding mechanism that is provided in this budget, Mr. Speaker, I think we have a more immediate concern with regards to fiscal year 2013, as it applies to providing them that additional authorization. Right now, I do not see the provision contained in this legislation that will provide that additional authorization other than commencing in fiscal year 2014, which is October 1st. So there's still an immediate concern, and I certainly look forward to addressing that particular issue, because we certainly don't want our one public hospital to continue to go through this serious series of issues or financial challenges when, in fact, the government of Guam, should the chief executive identify the resources, is able to lend that direct support. So I stand in support of the amendment to revert the $113 million provision for tax refunds back to $120. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. I have Senator Rispichu.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. Speaker, my focus in this entire budget deliberations continues to be compromise. And if you look at what the governor wanted originally at $113 million, and you take a look at what the revenue and taxation has been paying out and what they currently owe as tax refunds that are owed, the Office of Finance and Budget concluded that that number should be more like $129 million. And so if you want to look at compromise and where the middle road can be, I thought that $120 million was reasonable. It was reasonable because it recognizes that the priorities of this legislature is to continue to pay tax refunds. And despite what the governor says, how $113 million is necessary, at one point, he even said that he could pay all the tax refunds with $107 million. And we continue to question how that's remotely possible when what he's currently paid today far exceeds that amount. And so if we want to look at what is a reasonable amount for the tax refund provision, and you take the low, which is $113, and you take the high, which you didn't believe it was the high, but you take $129 million, I believe that $120 million is that middle of the road that I'm trying to seek in this entire budget deliberations. You know, it's funny how originally the governor told us to take $11 million and pay the hay implementation. And when we said that that was a great idea, and we were moving in that direction, he said that that was too much, and he wanted to bring that number down to $8.2 million. And when we, when we had another iteration of his budget bill, and we saw that $8.2 million number is what he was willing to fund hay, we said, okay, Governor, if that's what you want, we want to continue to be in a compromising, we want to continue to compromise. So when we did that, we see in this bill, that amount is reduced even further. And so the same can be said with the cost of living allowances. First, it was $1,100; then the governor wanted to pay $1,400. When we got information that the Section 30 funds will be increased by $9 million, we thought that after funding all the priorities, an additional priority is the cost of living allowance. And so we said, for $2 million more, we can make the retirees whole and bring their cost of living allowance up to $1,800. Now, the governor went from $1,400 to $1,500, and then when we passed the bill, he's now saying he's okay with $1,800. But we're aware of where the three areas of concerns are, and obviously, it's the tax refund provision. But, Mr. Speaker, there's no one in this room that, we don't want to go back to the days where the governor is having to forego paying tax refunds because he has to make payroll. And although he said that in the last election season that he will pay tax refunds before paying any other obligation of the government, we saw in his first year of office, he's been doing that. So at the time he was running for office, he said that whoever's doing that is cheating the taxpayer. And so, Mr. Speaker, when we made these provisions into the budget so that we'll never have to go down that road again, I'm concerned that going back down to $113 will bring us back to where we were a few years ago and where we were decades before that. And so I rise in support of the $120 million figure. And again, I'd like to generate some discussion that if in the event the governor does not need $120 million, we've seen how he's been able, through his transfer authorities and his cash management, just have taken that money and applied it elsewhere. But it's really better to have that money in reserves, and if that money is not necessary, then he can figure out how then best to apply those cash balances. And so maybe you can answer the question, what would happen if in the event we have $120 million set aside for tax refunds, but he only needs $113 million? What is the likely scenario, Mr. Speaker? Would he then be able to take that $7 million and redistribute it? Because if the reverse were true, where if we only set aside $113 million, it's possible that he can pay more than $113 million if that's what is going to take to comply with the court order? And are we just, are we wrapping ourselves around a philosophical debate where administratively, and how this budget is implemented, there's really no debate there?
My, my understanding would be that as long as the governor remains consistent with the court order requirement of making payments when they are due, you know, then that money becomes not necessary for refunds, and that's going to be the key in terms of where that money can then be deployed. But without it being reserved, he can't pay it.
So the scenario is better for us than if we book $120 million so that that monies will be there. And if in the event he only needs even $107 million, then he would be able to redistribute those caches elsewhere. So that's, I mean, that's what I'm appealing to the body, to recognize that this is the sixth version of this budget bill. And when the governor talks about compromise, I just don't want him to continue to take us down this road where his form of a resolution would be the original bill that he wanted. And so we're compromising already, but in this case, we're going back and forth on the tax refund provision, now claiming that GMH needs some of these monies. When we went to the GMH meeting, first of all, the board didn't even know why we were there. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, it was clear from... Secondly, Mr. Speaker, it was clear from the hospital management, that the governor's been working with the hospital authority, he's been transferring funds, and that any resolution to the ongoing GMH situation would require an executive branch remedy and not a legislative solution. And so I just don't, I just don't know why we're fixated on these tax refund payments provision being brought all the way down to 113 million, where if you want to talk about taking any risks, so that we don't go back to where we found ourselves a couple of years ago, I submit that 120 million dollars is the provision that we have to set aside for tax refund. So I'm not budging from that number, and I stand in full support of bookmarking 120 million. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispichio. I have Senator McCrory.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to also thank the Office of Finance and Budget for their hard work and your hard work as well, trying to come to a compromise. You know, I find it ironic how we're sitting here lecturing or second guessing the governor on paying tax refunds. I think he's done an excellent job of addressing that problem, that hasn't been addressed in more than maybe 10, 20 years. I don't see how we can, we can say we need 120 million dollars in tax refunds, and to tie his hands, when he's appropriating some of that, or most of that money with the 113 to the hospital. I just, I just don't get it. I mean, just for the record, I just wanted to make it clear, that there's not too much compromise left. We've agreed to the 1800 COLA. We've agreed to phase in the HEY study. The governor appropriated an extra 325,000 to the Guam Police Department's operational fund. I mean, a few weeks ago, we only had one police car working. We have yet to address that problem. Obviously, we had a bill that was just passed, that addresses the problem, but it's still, I mean, there's crime going on every day. This bill addresses more money to the police department. Not a lot, but some. And then we come to the hospital crisis, that we went to a meeting last week, Thursday, and find out that there's a, not a possible payless payday, there's going to be a payless payday in the last three payrolls. And the governor has no more transfer authority, legal transfer authority, to give them money. We were in committee as a whole with the fiscal team from the government and from the governor's office, and they told us that 113 million dollars was enough to pay the tax refunds. I mean, that's why we're not calling them in here now, because we know the numbers. So why would we second guess them? What is the reason for second guessing them? If they come up short, which I don't think they are, because of the tracking numbers, if they come up short on tax refunds, that's their problem.
No, it's the people of Guam's problem.
Well, but they have to answer to it. They have to answer to it. They came in here and they told us that they're tracking about 107, they have a cushion to 113, all they need is 113. So we're basically down to one compromise, which is going from 120 to 113, and give that extra money and appropriate it to the hospital. So we're looking at a compromise that deals with healthcare on the front line, which is Guam Memorial Hospital. And then we're looking at public safety, giving more to the police department. We've already agreed to the HEY, we've already agreed to the COLA. So I mean, it's basically the bill, it's basically the bill that you guys proposed to us, but with the refunds at 113 million.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The bill will actually also deny the judiciary their merit bonuses. The bill will also...
So make an amendment. So make an amendment. You made an amendment, make another amendment.
It is just providing you additional...
My point of information, Mr. Chairman, is that we're not talking about a single provision in this budget bill. There are other provisions in this budget bill. We're talking specifically about the 120 million dollar provision.
Well, since he brought the bonuses for the judiciary, make an amendment?
Well, when we get there, we will.
Yeah, well, okay, I'm just, you know, you can make an amendment.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm just saying, does this body, and I'm not questioning anybody in this body, I'm not going to question where their heart lies, or who they support or who they don't support. I'm just saying, that the hospital is in a crisis, the governor has identified 7 million dollars through tax refunds, 7 million additional dollars to give to the hospital, and then he's also given some more to the police department. So that's why I do not support the objection in amending this from 113 to 120, and I believe that...
May I correct you? You support the objection.
No, I don't support the amendment. I support the objection.
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. I support the objection.
Right.
And I really ask the body to consider it. And hopefully, I mean, this is, we are at the final compromise of six different versions of the same basic budget. And I thank you guys for your hard work, and I hope that we can all come to an agreement at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wants to speak on the amendment? Senator Tonyada, then Senator Yamashita?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, this past week, or several weeks, we've really been back and forth at the budget, and like the retiring speaker had said, that we come down to a last compromise here. And over the weekend was Labor Day. And going around to the different agencies and different tents, talking to different people, you know, they all admired the hard work that every single one in this body is doing. They're very grateful for all the things that we have done. You know, when I got to the hospital, and I was talking to one of the hospital employees, and we said, you know, Senator, we understand where people are coming from, when they're talking about the HEY pay, when they're talking about COLA, when they're talking about their merit bonuses. But Senator, all we're asking is to please help us take home our paycheck. All we're asking is for us to take home our paycheck. And you know, I know there's a lot of things that, you know, are going on at the hospital. But the hospital is, I think, one of the most critical components of this government, that when people start dying, they're not going to be worrying about their tax refunds. You know, this is the facility that takes care of everyone, regardless whether we're manomkut, regardless whether they're newborns, they take care of us from life to death. They take care of us, they were the only ones that took care of the kids who got sick from food poisoning. A lot of burdens are placed on our hospital, and yes, we recognize them. But when we, to give this additional funding to them, it's not going to solve all the problems, but it'll address the problems. And I hope my colleagues here recognize that even though we may not agree on many issues within a budget, or many issues that go on, come before this body, I think we all have to agree that the hospital is one place that we all must come to terms with, and we all must agree that we need to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. Well, I have been interviewed often in the last few days about why did I cast my vote for your budget bill? And I always started my preface by saying, I wasn't one of two, but I was one of 10. And honestly, that's the way I look at my seat. In the prayers today, we talked about remembering why we were elected in our positions. Well, I'm elected here to represent the voices of our families, to try to address the people's problems. When I voted on that last budget bill, I really did believe it was a good compromise, and I really did believe all the issues were addressed accordingly. But then I was apprised that the appropriations for the hospital was maxed out, and they really did need cash, that their monies were being garnished, because we're not making payments, and that the front has been fronting the money, but the huge problem there is, seems to be continuous and countless. Now, certainly, we know that collections need to be addressed, we need to do better at that. We know that the software system is being addressed, we know that the precision requirement update, there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed and apparently are being addressed. But all of those aspects altogether today won't give us the money that is needed for their next payroll. The hospital is the people's problem, and the hospital is our problem. We need to strengthen it and fortify it. As a new hospital moves in, right now, they need the cash. And I'm sure that if, you know, at 113, we can still deal with our income taxes, and this 8 million or 7 million can go to our hospital, and if people want to make amendments to ensure the judiciary get their increments, and that can all be done. But right now, GMH needs the cash, and they also need to do better at helping themselves. But right now, payroll needs to be addressed, doctors need to be paid, vendors need to be paid, we cannot afford to shut down 30 beds, it's not going to happen, it cannot happen. Many of us cannot go off island for treatment that is needed. And now the people are afraid, they're getting scared. And so for now, today, I say, this is what's going to help us keep our hospital healthy, or get back to a healthy state, that I ask that we do do this. Thank you very much, Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Speaker?
I initially had passed, because I thought that we aren't going to discuss the hospital, but it is imperative that we discuss at this point. This is not going to be the Messiah and the savior for the hospital needs, Mr. Speaker. Two months ago, two months ago yesterday, we gave the governor the authority, he signed actually, two months ago, the authority to take out a loan. Within his own branch of government, he couldn't get two directors to agree until last week. They needed Arthur Clark to finally resolve a fight between BBMR and GIDEA on whether or not they could borrow 20, 25, or 12 to refinance the outstanding. 60 days, they've been spinning on their thumbs. They've had the authority to take care of the hospital. And this bill isn't going to resolve it either. It's the executive branch. In this bill, I just checked, the amount of money that they're setting aside for Medicaid and for MIP is the same as it was in this year's budget. The amount that for the last seven years, I have been telling Public Health and Social Services and BBMR is insufficient, and every year, they come back for the same. It's like this set aside for the income tax. We are short, they haven't paid the private doctors, according to one email I got, six months. And GMH is saying they haven't been paid for two months, because DOA says that there's no more money in the MIP appropriation. If there's any money that's going to be appropriated in this bill, Mr. Chairman, I beg my colleagues, please, this time, this time, it cannot go down that same black hole that GMH, it's got to go to Public Health and Social Services. If there's going to be 10 million given to address this, 10 million has to be given to Public Health and Social Services for Medicaid, so that they can use that to match. That would be 45% of about 22 million dollars. If we give it straight to GMH, it's just 10 million that we dump down the hole. We give it to Public Health for Medicaid, then we at least get 55% from the feds, and we can give the hospital 21 or 22 million dollars, because our matching is 45%. This is short sighted. And so I'm asking that when we get to the GMH section, that we make sure that the amount goes to Public Health and Social Services, so we can take advantage of the 55% that the feds are willing to give us. And the administration has to get off its thumbs and get that loan going, so they have straight up the 10 million that they wanted. They could refinance the 12, they'd have 10 million dollars immediately. But if you can't lead and tell them, tell your department heads to quit fighting over whether or not it's 12 or 15, I mean, 12 or 25, and you need your senior advisor to be able to tell you, give you legal advice to do that, then we're going to be down this But I'm begging everybody, when we get to the Public Health and Social Services section, that amount has to be fully funded, at least 22 or 23, rather than the 10 that the governor has in this bill. And the Medicaid has to be up at 23 or 25, rather than what's in this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Cruz. Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Marson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank you and the Office of Finance and Budget for all the hard work that you've been bringing us together today. I think many of our colleagues know that this budget, or your previous budgets...
Just stick it outside. Senator Marson, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's very hard, I know, to put something this magnitude together in such a short time, so I know we've been back and forth at this, but I appreciate the effort being put to our values and what our commitment is to our people. I believe, Mr. Chair, that the governor has called us this session clearly because of an understanding of how, or actually draws us to a better understanding to how we can address the hospital's situation. Of course, that was a surprise to many of us, but as just as important as we are appropriately funding public safety, increasing the levels in education, I think what we're trying to do here is take that same approach to our healthcare or our hospital. It is clear that 7 million dollars in tax reserve allocations are being really allocated to our hospital. And I think clearly, Mr. Chair, that I would have some clear reservations if it was going somewhere else. It brings it back down to 113 with the reserves, but it's also hard to contend, Mr. Chair, with the administrations, with the help of the legislature, that they're not executing on a court order, but they have not been executing on paying out these taxes to our people. So I just want to make that clear, Mr. Chair, that it is hard to contend with that. I think it's obvious out there that people are, so that number is just hard to contend with. I will note, I know previous speakers has made it clear, there are some other provisions that we have to take a look at. that we have to take a look at. But I certainly don't want to see our hospital and see that type of headlines going into FY 2014. And if we could fix that at this point, as we are doing, like I said, clearly with public safety and our education system, we must continue to take the same approach of our I certainly, Mr. Chair, don't want to see a headline like that that looms around a possible or potential payless payday at our hospital. I'm sure many of us care about our hospital situation, and I think this is an opportune time that we come back to the drawing board of this budget process and fix that and prevent that from happening again. I clearly looked at the previous budget, Mr. Chair, that we just passed. I voted for that, I supported it. I saw the compromises made. I saw your efforts, Mr. Chair. But I also sense that with the administrations and this budget, it's showing a collaborative effort here to work with the existing efforts that you make to balance this budget. So I asked my colleagues that if we could move in a bipartisan effort on understanding the situation currently at the hospital and seeing how we can address it. If this 113 reverts back to 120, unless there's another solution on the table to address the hospital's needs, you know, I'm open to this. But clearly, I'm concerned, Mr. Chair, that this number would send us back down the road, our hospital, with our hospital in FY 2014. I see that the administration is clearly identifying a way we can find or a solution to this issue. And again, I just want to point that there will be clear reservations if this number was being dropped down to 113 with the reserves and the funds, tax refunds, and it was going somewhere else. But clearly, we see where it's going. There's no evidence that it's going somewhere else. We see it going to our hospital. So I ask my colleagues that to clearly look at this and think this through and understand clearly where this money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else wish to speak? Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think one of the first things we have to do here with us colleagues here and with everyone else really is to stop using the hospital as a political football. I think too much progress has been made in the past few years to get the hospital to where it's at. And we've always said, the initiatives that we put out also in this body were never silver bullets, but it was always to address the problems. This financial crisis at the hospital is something we've known. It shouldn't take anyone by surprise. We shouldn't be surprised knowing that the situation they're in today, you know, could have been, you know, it's just something that we should have known. There were red flags, you know, put up by the hospital a few months ago. These garnishments by the U.S. Treasury is something that we've known is going to come if we didn't settle what was the biggest threat to the hospital, which was to pay down their debt, especially to that one vendor, Perry Point, that their collection arm is the U.S. Treasury. And, you know, what we're seeing here, Mr. Chair, is that it's really, you know, and one of our good colleagues have said it earlier, it's really a philosophical debate that we're having here. And if a suggestion that was, you know, that was made earlier or an idea was said earlier that perhaps, you know, to be on the safe side, booking this tax refund provision at a higher amount, which, you know, the amendment is now to make it at 120, and if at some point that amount is not needed, then there's that opportunity, you know, or perhaps we need to put that language in, that opportunity that for our chief executive to be able to tap into that, to satisfy the other obligations that's needed. But one thing good about, you know, one positive thing that's come out with these discussions is that we're highlighting the needs of the hospital. And I commend and recognize my colleagues for all saying we need to take care of a hospital. We don't want the hospital to go down that same path, which has been for many years. If that's the case, Mr. Chair, we need to have the political will in this body. There are other provisions in this budget bill before us that, yes, they're needed. We need to pay our government employees the salary increases, the increases they deserve. But what's our priorities today? And so I'm going to support giving our hospital more money. This bill calls for it. We're going to do it. I'm going to support it one way or the other. But I believe it's also important to look at what our obligations are. One of the obligations are tax refunds. And so I'm going to ask my colleagues to really take a hard look at what it is we're doing here, take a hard look at what is being put before us. This crisis at the hospital is something we've known. We've known this train wreck. We've seen it happening a few months back. We knew that to avoid it was to pay down their debt, not two months ago, three months ago, four months ago, since January. We knew that we had to pay down their debt because if we didn't, we were going to have garnishments, which we're seeing today. And so to now use the hospital as, we need to do something now to win this philosophical discussion, I don't think it's right. And so I'm going to support giving the hospital more money. I'm going to support giving Medicaid more money because this seems like the path we're taking, hearing my colleagues saying we need to help the hospital, we need to take care of our priorities. So I'm going to ask them to please have that will when it's time to address it in this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Anybody else wish to speak? Senator Barnes, can you just say?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, you know, everybody's talking about the spirit of compromise. I kind of look at where we are on this budget and where we've moved and how we've moved. I don't think compromise has been the reason anybody's done anything. I think it's like trying to outbid each other. The governors tried to outbid this legislature with every facet and every movement and appropriation in this budget. We started this budget at $565 million, I think. That was the total expenditure of this budget that we proposed initially. And the governor vetoed that bill, said it wasn't enough. And he came back and he increased it by another $20 million in expenditure. And we're right back because we want to spend another $10 million in expenditure over what was appropriated in the budget that he just vetoed. It's not compromise. It's bidding. Maybe we need to go back to the $565 million budget and reprioritize the expenditures of this government. I'm certainly very, very much comfortable with doing that. Let's take a look at exactly where the priorities are, and let's apply the limited resources that we have. We are on the issue of the tax refunds. Everybody's saying, why are we questioning the governor? Why are we second guessing them? Well, I'm second guessing him, number one, because in 2011, this government paid out over a close to $120 million in income tax refunds. 2011, close to that amount, total payment. So what's going to convince me when we had a front page story that said tax refunds are getting larger every year? They're not getting smaller. They're getting larger. The Earn Income Tax Credit is expanding. More families are qualifying for the Earn Income Tax Credit. We're paying over $38 million in Earn Income Tax Credits. And so why would I think that if we paid out close to 120, why would I think, what would cause me to think, what kind of, you know, math would I be using that says, we've played out close to $120, $104 million in this fiscal year for refunds, at least up until the time of the last report, I thought, we were over 100 in how much we've paid out? We've only paid refunds that have been filed of March 27th. That was the last payment. The last payment of $6 million that went out for refunds was only up till March 27th. The deadline to file was March, I mean, April 15th. So why would I think that we would only pay 103 if we already paid 103 and we still have 5,000 or 6,000, maybe even more refunds to be processed and paid? What kind of math would cause me to think that, you know, 113 is not enough? That's the kind of math that caused me to think that 113 is not enough. We cannot afford to let this governor leave office and put us in a receivership over our income tax refunds. We're in a court order now. And let me tell you, if we don't provision enough, the only way this governor has been able to solve the problem with the refund is not through sound financial management, it's through massive borrowing that have burdened our children for the next 30 years. We will pay close to half a billion dollars in interest on the money that we borrowed to pay for refunds. Now, somebody tell me, wow, what an accomplishment. And then why, why did that happen? Because we never provisioned enough. When has this government provisioned more than enough money? When have we paid out more than we provisioned from our own collections every single year without resorting to borrowing? Never. And we don't have the capacity to borrow anymore. That's why we need to set aside the provision so the cash gets put in the bank accounts, and when the people file their taxes, they get them paid within six months. There's nothing to prevent us from coming back six months from now and saying, hey, we provisioned too much, let's reduce it. But why start the gate when history has told you that you're going to pay more? When your current experience this fiscal year, looking at how much you've paid out, how much is left to be paid out, how much left is to be processed, and you know, at least I can make the assertion from my analysis that 115 is not going to be enough, or 113 is not going to be enough. And when you allow the governor to spend the money instead of depositing the cash into the account of the income tax refund trust account, he's going to spend that money. He's not prudently managing this government. He's not asking us to reduce it so that we reduce our operating costs. He's asking us to reduce it so he can spend it. And that's how we've gotten from a budget that started out at like 563 to now, what is it? I couldn't keep up. What is the number now, Mr. Badasi? Between the time we passed the first budget, this governor has convinced us to go along with him and pad and increase expenditures by $40 million, expenditures, from revenues that I cautioned against even though I accepted them. I'm very cautious about the revenues that the governor has continually pushed, and I guess somebody says I shouldn't second guess. I shouldn't second guess whether those tax insurance rebates are going to come in at $3.7 million. I shouldn't guess, second guess that. I shouldn't second guess, you know, the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, whether that's going to come, come in at 27, 28, 29, because we're going to do what we said we were going to do three years ago that we haven't been able to do today. I guess I have no right to second guess that. But once again, we cannot afford to let this governor leave office and put us in receivership because he can't borrow any more money to pay refunds. We have to force the issue and the matter at hand, and the only thing that can prevent us from doing that when this governor leaves office is that we have enough provisions so that the deposits need to be made because we have to pay those refunds within six months of being filed. I'll bet you, if we didn't have that, he wouldn't deposit the money. That is why it's so important. Every governor thinks, you know, the crisis that he has at hand is more important than refunds. That's why we owe 350. That's why we have felt, every governor has felt that he didn't have to pay the people their refund, that he wanted to pave roads for an election, or he wanted to give a hay study, or he wanted to do other things instead of setting aside the proper provision for refunds. And yes, I mentioned those things because, yeah, I challenge everyone in here who has said we need to be fiscally responsible. Take me back to that road. I'll follow you of fiscal responsibility. This is not the road that I would choose to travel in this budget, but it is the road that I felt addressed the issues and concerns of my colleagues. And now, we're back with another bid, $10 million more dollars. Let's add $10 million more dollars in spending. If the governor's concerned, why don't we cut the expenditure and give the money to GMH? As a matter of fact, the governor has reserved 15% of the budget of the executive branch in this government. I say we should just appropriate that money. If he indeed is such a financial wizard that he has been able to run this government on a 15% reserve and he has saved 15%, I say, let's pass the bill tomorrow or the next day that will give GMH the 15% reserve that this financial wizard has been able to manage this government and give it to GMH. It's simple. The crisis at GMH in fiscal year 2013, where's the appropriation? This budget is for fiscal year 2014. And remember, once again, back to this bidding, the governor came back with 13 million, we put in 13 million, that was the request, we worked with them on that, came back, he wanted 15. When we reallocated all of the resources we had, we knew there was an additional million, so we put it back into GMH because we knew there was, they could use assistance the next fiscal year. Now he comes back and he wants 10 million more for GMH. And why, but he needs it now. They need the cash now. Does the governor, is the governor telling me that tomorrow, if we pass this bill, that he has 10 million in the bank sitting to give to GMH? Has anybody, did they tell you that? Can we get a fiscal note from BBMR telling us that $10 million is available tomorrow? The next day? The next week for GMH? Where's the fiscal note on this bill? Where's the assurance that what the governor is telling us in here is in fact the situation? We can't even get a financial report. They're refusing to update the revenue collections of this government in the financial system of our government. We haven't seen it in the EAS 400. Now why? Why can't we see that? I think, as my colleagues mentioned, now GMH is the latest. Before, it was DOE. We gave DOE 214 million. Governor comes back to 19. I mean, we agree with 219 because our colleagues are concerned about that, and we could support it from the revenues that the governor, that we decided to accept, some of us reluctantly, and gave DOE 219. Now he says, oh my God, I wanted to give him 225. But he's not willing to cut any other costs. Education's a priority for him, but he's not willing, except for the judiciary. I don't know why he's always willing to cut the judiciary. Every time we put in an appropriation for the judiciary, he not only cuts the merit bonus, he cuts the operations. But he's not willing to cut anywhere else in this government, any of the allocations that have increased between the first iteration of this budget and now. He's been willing to, he's not willing to cut anything except the judiciary and GCC and the public defender. He's got something against attorneys or lawyers or people who defend the poor. But he's not willing to cut anything else. You know, he's saying, I would have given DOE 225 million. I want to give it to them, but you didn't appropriate enough. Well, if that is your priority, then reassess the other priority so that you can give him 225, but he's not. He's not doing it. He's saying, you're preventing me from doing it. Wait a minute, this is your budget. How did we prevent... How did we prevent you from reallocating the revenues that you have identified in this budget so that you can give DOE 225? How did we prevent you? This is your version. But he's saying, "No, the legislature's preventing me from giving you." I say, "Cut, cut, Governor. Take this budget back. Go back. If you want to give DOE 225, then cut the other departments and agencies and give to, come back with a 225 budget. If you really wanted to, are you just, you know, speaking? Are you left tongue today or right tongue today? Because that's what we get with every single budget. This budget is the right-tongued version of Eddie Calvo. This budget is a left-tongued version of Governor Calvo. I can't keep up almost anymore and I've got a staff at OB to help me. And they're good. They're good staff and I thank all of my colleagues for recognizing that. But going back to the provision, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, the reason that we found ourselves and is the solution, you know, they said, "Hey, we don't need to provision the right amount because we borrowed money and we paid it all off and so forth." It's exactly why we had to borrow money. So is the solution to under-provision? Is that the solution to resolving the problem that caused us to borrow $350 million to under-provision it? Or is the solution, "Let's provision it correctly." If we provision it according to the requirements of statute and the calculations done by the governor's own revenue and taxation, it should be 129. But again, there's the movement on this side of the branch, of the tree. And we moved because we looked at those numbers. We looked at what we paid in 2001, I mean 2011. We looked at how much we've paid so far, how much is left to be filed, how much is left to be paid. We have over, close to $28 million left to be paid, if I understand correctly from the last reports. So 100 plus 28 is just not 115 or 113 even. And somewhere between those two are the numbers, but 100 plus 128 is 128. So yes, I support this amendment. I wish it would pass and yes, we will go and resolve the hospitals' crisis. But the hospitals' crisis, again, I must reiterate, is for the next fiscal, for this fiscal year. And this budget is for the next fiscal year. And so if we want to resolve the problem, then we need to take revenues today. The governor wants to dig us a hole already before we even start 2014. Before we even start the 2014 budget, the governor wants to dig us into a hole by spending $10 million of 2014 revenues that we haven't even collected yet. Now, tell me the financial wizardry behind that theory. But that's what it does. That's why the solution, as my good colleague says, they've had, when, when we passed the bill that allowed the governor to use 2 million of compact impact, I immediately wrote to the Assistant Secretary of Interior Acting. And I immediately said, "Look, we've passed this bill. GMH is in a crisis. The biggest vendor that we owe is Perry Point and arm of the federal government. Can you approve the authority for," because the governor needed the approval, "can you approve the $2 million earmarked to support the loan?" And she came back and she told him, "Yes," on July, by, I think it was July 21st, she was here for Liberation Day. And she told, according to the letter that we wrote and what we've been able to receive, she approved it pretty fast. The governor had not even asked her at that time. Yet there was a crisis at GMH, but he just sat back. He sat back and waited on that authorization, waited on getting the approval from DOI. I don't know what for, but he certainly sat back because my letter was the first letter she received inquiring about that matter. And then, when it was approved, nothing happened. Nothing happened. And now we have a crisis. We need to resolve the crisis for this fiscal year with this fiscal year dollars, I believe, with cash. And if you execute that loan, that's one way of getting the cash in order to resolve the issue of paying off those vendors. This bill does not resolve the issue of cash available to the hospital. At this moment in time, it lies in executing that authority to borrow and putting that into play and the cash being remitted to GMH that is readily available. And so if we're interested about the hospital, we can resolve that completely outside of this budget. It does not have to enter into this budget. We do not have to dig ourselves into a hole for fiscal year FY 2014 before we even started in order to solve GMH problems today. The immediate, the last time this happened, when the hospital had a problem, the governor fired the entire board. I can't see why it's different today. Why he's putting up with a board that has allowed the hospital to put itself into this, into this dilemma. He should fire that board and place himself there like he did at the very beginning when he fired the other board and placed himself there and run that hospital and use the entire resources of this government and the executive branch that he has control over to solve that problem immediately. He does not need this legislative authority contained in this bill that has to wait till next fiscal year. But he's not willing to do that because this is not about the hospital. So in order to avert another crisis on the refunds, which we can't resolve by borrowing because we don't have the borrowing capacity anymore and that will result in a federal receivership, I believe that we need to set the right provision. And at this time, I am very confident and comfortable that that right number is $120 million and I support the amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Mike Muntiako, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I know we're, we're jumping ahead, but you know, I did go to the section regarding the intention and I do see that Section 2 of Chapter 3, Part 1, does have the language that this section shall be effective upon enactment. So I know that the, our prior speaker, the good speaker, had mentioned that we need to address it, but it is addressed in the section. And so I just wanted to do that as a point of clarification that this section does identify and make the funds available in this fiscal year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just a, just also a point of information, having worked, obviously, we've all participated in budget processes regularly over the course of the past several years, but I'm going to have to endorse the statement that was proffered by the good chairman of appropriations. If you read the language, it says, "It's appropriated from the general fund to GMHA for operational expenses." Now, the question is because it's inserted into fiscal year 14 budget, where does the funding authorization or appropriation originate from? Because if you look at Section 1, Section 3, and Section 4 of that particular chapter, Madam Chair, it highlights, "We'll all go towards fiscal year 2014 operational expenses." In this section, it could be read either way, that it could originate from fiscal year 13 funds and it's an authorization or appropriation out of fiscal year 13 funds. So if that's the case, how are we able to reconcile through the entire government of Guam fiscal year 13 budget, whether in fact there's $10.5 million readily available? If in fact, the intent is that it originate from fiscal year 14 budget, then obviously all of the statements that have been made with regards to appropriating fiscal year 14 funds, the proper language that has been utilized and the good chairman is very much aware of this in the past, has been that the sum of, whatever that amount is, is hereby appropriated in advance from fiscal year 14 funds for the operational requirements of the existing agency. So just a point of clarification, Madam Chair, because there's a little bit of confusion in terms of, yes, the section shall be effective immediately upon enactment, but where would the funding originate from? Fiscal year 13 or fiscal year 14? And that's when we get to this section, that's where the clarity has to be provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, Speaker, on that point of clarification.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, you know, in, in my 20 years here and looking at 20, 20 years worth of budget, whenever we wanted to authorize the governor to spend money from the other fiscal year, we would do and language it as an advanced appropriation and authorize him to spend FY 2014 revenues in FY 2013. Now, this may be a new way of doing it. I haven't seen this new way, but if we were to follow what has been the practice of every legislature in the past, that's the way the language has been written in order to unquestionably allow access to those revenues.
Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. On the motion, if anybody, anybody else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Sniklas, would you like to close on the amendment or call for the vote?
I'd like to close, Madam Chair.
Please do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very interesting dialogue, very interesting discussion. A lot of it talking about the fiscal responsibility, the need to find money for the hospital, the need for compromise. Madam Chair, it's compromise, Mr. Chair, it's compromise that's taken us to this point. If we go back to the original bill that we proffered, Bill Number 38-32, it spent 14 million dollars less than what the governor's asking for now. If the hospital crisis is truly an emergency that we all of a sudden need to react to, then I think that a motion should be made for us to override Bill 38-32 that the governor vetoed. Bill 38-32 will provide more money for hay. It will fully fund COLA. It will keep our government liens that we're not going on a hiring spree. It will provide for smart financial management to be able to make merit bonuses whole. And it will provide $120 million for tax refund provisions. It was in the spirit of compromise that we moved away from Bill 38 and we introduced a new budget bill that again, the governor vetoed. In spite of having 10 votes, the governor vetoed. Now, because we have this hospital crisis and he wants to take the money from the tax refunds, the very thing that he's going around championing as his priority over the last 12 months is the very thing he wants to put at risk over the next 12 months. If we truly want to keep tax refunds as a priority, if we truly want to start paying our people what they're worth, if we truly want to make our retirees whole by restoring, not increasing, but restoring their COLA to what it once was, and if we truly want to find money for the hospital, not 7 million, but 14 million, we can do it simply by overriding Bill 38-32, Mr. Chairman. We tried and we failed. It was vetoed by the governor. We tried to override it and it failed. And now here we are saying, "Take from the refunds and use it for the hospital." If we really want to react to this hospital crisis while still making good on all those things that we agreed are priorities, then perhaps we should go back and override this Bill 38-32. And once we do and it becomes enacted into public law, we can then go in and make an additional appropriation of that $14 million savings, which is the difference from the governor's budget to Bill 38, our budget, and appropriate from that $14 million to the hospital. That is a sound step-by-step solution. And it's something that we can easily do. Or we can continue to play this game of crisis reaction, "Give it, give it to me the way I want. Here's a crisis. Give it to me the way I want." We did this not too long ago, Mr. Chairman, when we were talking about the bond for the airport. There was a bill ever since July, I'm sorry, ever since June, we could have been called into special session in July to address the urgency of that particular issue, but it was waited until the last minutes that we can lump in all these other things and call it a crisis. What new crisis are we going to try to manufacture by reducing income tax provisions down to 113 so that we can again force the hand of this legislature? That's not the way to run a government, Mr. Chairman. We must be fiscally responsible. And I'm amazed that those in this body who've been screaming about fiscal responsibility are the very same people who've taken this budget, $14 million higher because they're not willing to override vetoes and now looking to put refunds at risk. There is zero fiscal responsibility in that, Mr. Chairman. We have Bill 38-32. If we override this veto, we'll free up $14 million and we can give that to the hospital, double what the governor wants. So perhaps that's the next step that we should take. But in the meantime, in this special session, I'd like to close by addressing the governor's bill and increasing every mention in here of the provision for tax refunds from 113 to 120 million. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Sniklas. On the motion to increase 113, the provision for refunds from 113 to 120 and do so throughout Chapter 1 of the bill wherever that appears and requires a change in the totals to reflect that change. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your hand. The amendment carries. Senator, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, given the passage of that amendment and the requirement now for the Office of Finance and Budget, yourself and all of us, to rework these numbers from, from, from the Chapter 1 all the way to the ending of this budget bill that the governor submitted to us, I move that we recess till 2:00 PM tomorrow.
On the motion to recess till 2:00 PM tomorrow? No objections? Committee of the House in recess till 2:00 PM tomorrow.